Good evening. I would like to call to order the February 22nd, 2016 Baller City Council Meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards is absent. Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here. May I have a motion to excuse Mr. Edwards?
So moved, Mayor.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Martin to excuse Mr. Edwards, seconded by Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Here.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Formal approval of the city council regular meeting minutes of February 8th. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions to the regular city council meeting minutes of the last meeting?
None, Mayor.
None, Mayor.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Mayor's announcements. We have one thing on the agenda this evening. Fire Chief Nyhard is going to give us our annual report. Chief, would you like to start?
Good evening.
Evening.
Thanks a lot for having me come talk to you because I love talking about the fire department because it's so easy, because we have such great staff and great facilities and equipment. So it makes it really easy and I want you to know some of the things that we've done previous year. As you'll see, this is just general information about the staffing. It says seven career. That's inaccurate right now. We only have six. We have one of our firefighters here, the Dayton Fire Department. We're in the process right now of replacing his position. So we will get to seven probably in a month or so and get somebody else to fill this spot. Then you'll see the part-time and the volunteers. I compared last year. We have more part-time and we have less volunteers and the resource members are the same. And in the vehicles, exactly the same as we had last year. This year, we're going to do something with the special tactics and rescue trailer. The two years I've been here, we've never used it. So we're going to take it and take out the equipment that we need. And we're going to give the trailer to the service department because they said they would have a use for it. So it'll remain in the city. It'll just be under the service department. We have a lot of experience on the department, 25, 20, and 10 years. For Lynn Stokes Pro and Captain Bizarro is in the audience tonight and Nathan Heaster with 10 years. So there's a lot of experience which really helps because we also have a lot of young people. If I can get them to tap the resource of the experienced people and have something there so they could gain some of the years of knowledge that some of these individuals have. So this year, we bought a new medic. And there's a committee that was formed. They did a lot of work on the interior of the body of it, the workstation, to make it more efficient, to make their jobs a little easier because that's what's basically their workspace. And so they should have some sort of input into how that's put together. The other thing you can't tell from the picture, but that is a gasoline medic as opposed to the diesels that we had before. We saved about $20,000 by going with a gasoline engine. In this size community with the hospitals pretty close, they don't put a lot of miles on it. So to me, it made sense that we would do something in a gasoline engine. Maintenance costs are less as well. So... And then below that, you'll see a little laptop computer. We got those for the medics. And they can actually enter reports on the scene if they wish. And it can be uploaded into where the software is kept. And it also has touchscreen, so they have dropdown menus that they can make selections. And it speeds up the process to get those reports entered, get them back in service. The other thing that this allows is we can have electronic signatures. And so it cuts down on some of the paperwork that we had. The software itself is very flexible and has a lot of great features to it, like it'll have the 100 most-used prescription drugs. So if the guys go through there, they can just select those drugs out of there. And so they don't have to spell aspirin or penicillin or some of those things. They can just pick it and it becomes consistently spelled correctly. And also with that software, we can get a lot of more data out of it than we could in the previous one. So it's a combination of laptops and the new software. Our Fire Prevention Week is fantastic. Lieutenant Narker heads that up and he does a great job of going out to all the schools and talking about fire prevention and fire safety. It does a really great job of keeping, I believe, the fire laws down. And it also gives us an opportunity to interact with the community. And at the end of that, it's the open house and that's tremendous. I think that's a, you know, fire departments in the area are jealous of that open house because it is pretty amazing. It's a lot of fun and we get to meet a lot of the community, again, the adults as well. One of the new things we added, Lieutenant Lueker brought this up, was you'll see the little box burning there. That was a new demonstration that we put in. And it was to show the flammability of an old Christmas tree, live Christmas tree, and then the workings of smoke detectors. So I think it did a great job. Also Lieutenant Lueker, he does car seat checks. And this is very popular. He did more in this drive-through this year than he did last year. And overall, he did more. It's difficult to find trained car seat inspectors. It's not an easy thing to get through. It's 40 hours of classroom. Then there's continuing ed and all that kind of stuff. So it's a nice thing that we can offer, not just our community, but the community at large because a lot of people come here to get their car seats inspected and installed as well. You know, continuous self-improvement, something I've been pushing because if we can all improve ourselves a little bit, then in general, the fire department gets better as a department. And some of that ways is through education. And you'll see here, we had several individuals complete their degrees. Firefighter Leach and Peters who went to Dayton Fire Department. Captain Bizarro, they all got their associate's degree. And as they probably figure that once that's done, I'll push them for the bachelor's degree because it's just the way I am, never satisfied. We have one of our members in the paramedic program. He just completed that. And that is a lot of work. It is a year and a half at least of not just classroom, but lab time and then hospital time. So it takes a tremendous effort. It's basically a life existence until you're done with it. So he completed that. And then we have a man, firefighter current, she's in EMT training. And then we have three other members, firefighter Saldivar, Zexor, and Cross in the paramedic program. So again, we're trying to get a little bit better individually and as a department. Here's our own statistics. You get to see that last year, we were really busy last year comparatively. You'll see that mutual aid that we gave out is part of the reason, but that's not all the reason. If I could tell you exactly why we were that much busier, I would, but I have no idea. So except for the mutual aid, but that doesn't explain all of it. Pretty consistent, last year was like, it was around 54, 57% between EMS and fire. Same for this current year, last year, 2015. So we're consistent on that, which is kind of odd. List departments were 78, 80% EMS and 20% fire. I think the reason that we're this way is because any kind of fire that we might have that's significant or could be significant, we have to get mutual aid. And we have to provide mutual aid to everybody else when they get something because they're all small departments. Nobody has the resources to do that on their own. So we go a lot more out on fires because of that mutual aid component. This is run by area. And you can see that Area 3 was the busiest, not by much, but it was the busiest. It's also probably the biggest. That was the case last year. I can't remember which one it was last year, but the second biggest was last year, I suppose, I guess. Probably by population, by demographics of that population, by number of households. All that could play into that. This is a breakdown of the different EMS calls we had. If you'll see, the largest one is illness. It's kind of the bucket that holds everything. People will call up. They don't exactly know what's wrong. They just don't feel well. And even after we see them and we evaluate them, a lot of times, we don't know what's wrong exactly either because it might take advanced testing and things like that. So that's where a lot of us fall. And then the other big bucket is injury. So people get hurt, fall down, whatever, and we get called out. As far as fire goes, you're going to see the largest is service runs. That is individuals that maybe have fallen and need our help to get back up, but they're not injured. We're not going to remove them. And so we just basically count it as a run and it falls into the fire category. It's kind of weird, but it's just a service run. So that's why you see that as the largest one. And then you can see the other ones, false alarms and things like that is what we typically go out on in fire falls. So day of the week, that's about as evenly divided pie as you could have. And Friday's the big night here in the city, I guess. Last year was Wednesday. I have no idea. I would assume it's because Bellbrook is bedroom community. People live here. It's not necessarily where they work and it's not necessarily where they come to enjoy nightlife. So typically Fridays and Saturdays will boost up because of that. You know, Bellbrook's not that kind of community, so it's all very even. What time is busiest? That's noon to 6:00 PM. That's pretty typical. I believe that people are just more active. They're coming home from work. They're doing all those kinds of things. And then we just get more calls based on that. Obviously, in the middle of the night, we don't get as many calls. It's pretty standard. So if you want to see where our mutual aid information is, so we received it 34 times. Most of that is for fire. And we went on 141 times. Now you'll notice that Beaver Creek was the largest block there. And that's because they did some staffing adjustments. And so we got called to fill in when they had gaps. And we did a lot of that, especially early in the year, and it slowed down a little bit. And it's gotten a little more consistent, but I know they're also hiring. So I would assume when they hire more people, we'll go out there less. And then you can see, a lot of it is fire because again, we're small communities in the county. We have a fire incident. We've got to take everybody. So we all get called.
Chief, talking about the mutual aid there a little bit, like specifically Beaver Creek, that really jumped out at me because, you know, I don't see them responding any on your chart, but yet, you know, we went there 62 times. Do any of those generate income in terms of...
Yes.
Okay, so if you actually take someone...
Absolutely. It becomes a transport fee and it would be a non-resident fee as well. So, okay, yeah, that is the case. And again, fire, the fires we were on, they were really large fires and they needed the extra help, so... And this one is a new one that I put in. This is our response times. And you can see that this breaks down response times. The PSAP is the Public Safety Answering Point, so it's dispatch. And then how long it takes them to process that call. And then there's the turnout time, which is the time between when they hear the tones and they go and route in the vehicle. And then the other parts is drive time. You'll see our average is five minutes and 16 seconds, which is excellent. So we're doing very well in that. This allows us to have a benchmark so that we can monitor that and see if there's ways we can improve it and see, make sure the guys are getting out. I don't know how much opportunity it would be to make dispatch any faster, but the rest of it, as far as the guys, turnout time is within our control. Driving is, as far as it is, I guess, you don't want to ask them to drive any faster, so... And that's it. I want to thank Lieutenant Narker and Captain Bizarro for helping me put this together. And Lieutenant Narker is our stats guy, so when I need something, he puts it together. And Captain Bizarro worked on this presentation as well. They did a great job. Actually, all of them did a great job.
There's a lot of talk in the news about Heatherboards. Have you guys seen any kind of uptick in fires?
None of them have. Flamed out on our, in our community that I know of unless it ain't call us.
Because there were a lot. I think there were Christmas gifts.
Yes. If anyone lucky, I don't have any of those I'm aware of.
Chief, just a comment on the ISO rating. Congratulations on getting it from three to two. What type of things do they look at and what made a difference this year versus prior years when they came and looked at us?
They changed a little bit of the rating, so that's part of it. The fact that we added some staffing on a round-the-clock basis helped. The fact that we are a very small community with two fire stations helped. Our training was really good, so that helped. So those are little things. And actually, having a dispatch center gave us more points.
Really?
Because they're larger and they have more backup systems. So ISO looks at how many ways can a person get a hold of emergency services? And then if something happens, what's their backup to that? And they have a lot of that. They have a lot of dispatchers on duty, which they can use for if we would have a bigger one. So that was some of the reasons why.
That's good to know because we certainly talked a lot about dispatch and we also talked a lot about the redundancy as being a real plus to going to a bigger dispatch versus having one person sitting at Bellbrook all the time.
And that's where the ISO, they look at that redundancy of dispatchers and all that.
Okay, good.
They also take into account the water system too.
Yes, yes.
A significant portion of the ISO rating is the water system and...
But it was so high the last time that we got a little bit better, but it was so high you couldn't really improve it. So I mean, it is really good and that is a big portion of it. But it was already, from the previous report when I looked at it, rated really high. So they got a couple percentage points extra, but...
So it didn't take much to go from a three to a two, you're saying, in terms of the difference there?
Well, in the water department, there wasn't a lot of difference. I don't remember what the scoring was exactly.
Right.
Just a few things. A look at the time it takes us to get out, how many people we can get on the scene immediately is part of their evaluation as well.
Before the chief sits down, I mean, a couple of things in this report that are different. The response time data is something that we were able to begin collecting in 2015. We weren't ever able to really do that other than doing it manually before. Now this is all in the software and they can generate this stuff. So I think that gives us some good benchmarks to go forward from and to measure as we go forward with. And then the other thing, Mr. Martin mentioned, the mutual aid responses. I mean, the responses to Beaver Creek are not an issue until that means we can't respond to somebody here.
Right.
And I've had the chief look at this and I don't remember the exact numbers, but some of our, at least a couple of our mutual aid received responses are because we were on mutual aid somewhere else.
Gotcha.
So that's where that becomes an issue and that's why we'll monitor that. It hasn't become a significant issue, but that is something that we have to be aware of.
Sure.
That if we're in Beaver Creek, that means we're not here. And we want to be able to provide the service to the residents.
Priority is Bellbrook, obviously. So I think there were actually three calls where we were on another mutual aid, not necessarily Beaver Creek. And we had to call mutual aid here for three times.
Can we pick and choose if we want to respond to a mutual aid call or is it pretty much standard that you'll be there or someone will be there since we've got two stations?
We have denied it at least once that I'm aware of because that was on a fire in Beaver Creek and they already had a ladder and an engine and they wanted another medic and we denied that if I remember that correctly. So we have some ability to not, to deny that. But on a regular basis, if we're there, we'll respond just as they will for us.
Do they use the township very often on mutual aid?
Well, it is a township.
No.
Beaver Creek.
No, they don't.
Sugar Creek, because you're asking...
Because I think Sugar Creek could be a little bit closer from Macaulay Road Station to respond back versus us, but...
Historically, they've not done that as much. We've been there first call on that, so...
Understood.
Chief, you mentioned there's charges involved when you dispatch to Beaver Creek?
Mm-hmm. We make a removal. Now if we go there and we don't make a removal, it's not a charge.
Okay, so if they respond to us, let's say I got picked up by Sugar Creek, would I get charged?
You would.
Mm-hmm. If you got picked up by us, you'd get charged too.
Yeah.
If you got transported by us, you would...
You would get charged.
You were going to get charged by whoever. Just the revenue goes back to...
But for us, it's a soft bill, right? For a town, for a resident?
Yes.
Well, yeah.
Yes.
Is it the same charge?
It's an insurance bill. Insurance bill.
Right. It's similar. It's not the same.
Varies by...
It varies by community. So they can set whatever they want to charge and your insurance will pay whatever, you know, they allow.
Right.
But you're more than likely going to get charged. And, you know, this is one where we've sort of taken the, if it's not collected, this is the ones that we'll turn over to the Attorney General for a non-resident. So if we go to, if we go to Beaver Creek and they don't, then they don't pay, we've sort of taken more of a hard billing stance on those as opposed to the soft billing that we do for the residents.
I was just trying to get clear that if you live here, you pay taxes, you know, and another department is charging you. The hard, what do you call it, hard charge or hard bill?
Hard bill.
Other than your insurance. I don't know if I like that.
It's...
I don't think I'd like it if I got picked up by Beaver Creek and got billed.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I know I wouldn't like it.
Right, but you're going to, if you got picked up by us, you'd get a bill too.
Correct. And obviously, whatever insurance is going to pay, they're going to pay, but...
Right, and that's where the soft billing comes from.
Right, but it would sound like from Beaver Creek, there might not be the soft estimate.
Well, no, I don't know how they handle theirs at all.
It's probably very similar. Most of them are handled the same, but...
But it sounds like you're already keeping a close eye in terms of the impact...
I mean, when you look at the amount of mutual aid we receive and particularly the EMS mutual aid, I mean, the fire, we're going to get mutual aid when we have, that's going to happen. And that's, as you can see, like Washington Township, that's the majority of those responses. So in reality, we had 14 mutual aid medic calls in the entire year.
Right.
There's not many of those, but they do happen. And we don't know how many of the, they could probably run it, how many of those were actual transports either. They could have just been responding. Sometimes I'm assuming even we'll ultimately end up on scene if...
Sure, we try to have somebody, whether that be one of the staff members show up or whatever, to be on scene if we can, even if we're using a mutual aid.
Chief, is there anything else that you need or would like to have or, I'm trying to find what I'd like to have.
That's a dangerous question.
Yeah, I know.
No, it's...
Not that you'll get it. He's just curious.
It's on the agenda later.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think I asked him already.
There's a track on the agenda later that'll answer that question.
Get ahead of yourself.
I just appreciate the opportunity to work here and work with the great staff and all of you and care for the department as well. So it was a great year and I'm looking forward to 2016, so...
Chief, have we had very many uses of Narcan?
Not that many. Not comparatively. We have used it, but it's not like what you would read from other communities, so...
I didn't know if I hear about it, but I don't really hear about it, so I didn't really...
You know, we'll go through a phase where we might use a little bit, but it's not, it's not like you would read in Dayton and some of those other places, so different community.
Anyone on council have any other questions?
Good report. Thanks.
I just appreciate the job you do and...
Thank you.
Yeah.
I feel real confident if I have to go here.
Yeah, this might be a question for Greg, but I'll ask it anyway. I noticed the Bellbrook TV, we kind of had a peak back in 2012 of the public messaging and the bulletin boards on the Community Access Channel and then it's been in decline for four years. Any idea why? Any clue?
I think I did try and cover that in there. Our biggest thing is like the part history.
Okay.
They used to do all their own slides for every program. Well, now they're not having the time to do for each individual program, so they're slapping them all on one slide.
Ah.
So you're taking, you know, like today I put one of their slides on and took, I think there's 10 programs on there that they put on one slide. They used to do 10 slides.
Gotcha. So a lot of it might just be consolidation of content.
And then we also, a lot of the churches in the area, a lot of the churches have gone down and membership and not doing quite the things they used to. The biggest one I know that state assistance has been the library.
Okay.
Library and city are the two biggest where they get stuff from, so...
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from council? Chief, great job once again.
Thank you.
I'm always impressed with our response time. I think that's something you should be proud of. And I think it would be very hard to find another community that would have that type of response. And I don't really have anything to judge it against, but, you know, and it doesn't include dispatch time, but five minutes is pretty, seems very fast to me.
Very fast.
So how long does it take? Do you guys keep track of that when the call came in to when you guys, the dispatch time between there? Is that in there?
Yeah, it is in there.
Okay.
Forty-some seconds.
Forty-some seconds, okay.
Yeah.
That's not bad. So six minutes. That's really good.
No, that's part of it.
Oh, you've got that in there. Okay.
Yeah, it's all broken down.
Gotcha.
Time they call to the time it's dispatched.
That's impressive.
It's 41 seconds. So it's five minutes and 16 seconds total.
That's very impressive. So great job. Great job to you guys too and girls who aren't here this evening. So very nice. Thank you very much. Great presentation. Moving on, introduction of ordinances. We have one ordinance this evening, ordinance number 2016-2. Mr. Martin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 16-2, amending Part IV Traffic Code of the Bellbrook Municipal Code. Whereas the city of Bellbrook periodically reviews its policies and procedures and whereas the city has determined that sections of the traffic code are duplicated from sections of the Ohio Revised Code. And whereas the city will use the Ohio Revised Code section when appropriate and whereas the city desires to eliminate the sections of the traffic code that are duplicates of the Ohio Revised Code. Now therefore, the city of Bellbrook hereby ordains Section 1 that the following amendments to Chapter 402, Definitions of the Bellbrook Municipal Code, be approved with deletions shown by brackets and strike through and additions shown by italics and underline. And we will be amending Section 402.01, meanings of words and phrases, including A, except otherwise is provided the definition set forth in Ohio Revised Code 4501.01 and Ohio Revised Code 4511.01 shall apply to this traffic code and penal laws of the municipality, except as otherwise provided the following words and phrases when used in this traffic code shall have the meanings respectively ascribed to them in this chapter. Section 2, the following sections of Chapter 402, Definitions of the Bellbrook Municipal Code, will be deleted in their entirety. And it begins at 402.02, agriculture tractor, multi-wheeled agriculture tractor, all the way down to 402.53, vehicle. So taking a whole lot out of that section. Section 3, that the following sections of Chapter 404, enforcement and pounding of the Bellbrook Municipal Code, shall be deleted in their entirety. And that will be from 404.01 through 404.99. Section 4, the following section of Chapter 408, penalties of the Bellbrook Municipal Code, will be deleted in its entirety and that includes 408.03, suspension of driver's license. Section 5, the following section of Chapter 412, obstruction and special uses of public ways of the Bellbrook Municipal Code, be deleted in its entirety. Section 412.05, freeway use prohibited by pedestrians, bicycles, and animals, and 412.99, penalty. Section 6, the following sections of Chapter 414, traffic control devices of the Bellbrook Municipal Code, be deleted in their entirety. And that will be from 414.01, obedience to traffic control devices, through 414.99, penalty. Section 7, that the following sections of Chapter 416, pedestrians of the Bellbrook Municipal Code, be deleted in their entirety. That will be from 416.01, duties of pedestrians and drivers at crosswalks, through 416.99, penalty. Section 8, that the following sections of Chapter 432, operation generally of the Bellbrook Municipal Code, be deleted in their entirety. Section 432.01, driving upon right side of roadway exceptions, all the way through 432.99, penalty. Section 9, that the following sections of Chapter 434, OVI, reckless operation and speed of the Bellbrook Municipal Code, be deleted in their entirety. Section 434.02, reckless operation on streets, public or private property, through Section 434.99, penalty. Section 10, that the following sections of Chapter 436, licensing accidents of the Bellbrook Municipal Code, be deleted in their entirety, from 436.01, drivers of, or commercial driver's license required, through 414.01, penalty. license required, through 436.99, penalty. Section 11, that the following amendments to Chapter 438, safety and equipment of the Bellbrook Municipal Code, be approved with deletions shown by brackets and strike through, and additions shown by italics and underline. And we will be modifying 438.21. Section 12, that the following sections of Chapter 438, safety and equipment of the Bellbrook Municipal Code, be deleted in their entirety. 438.01, driving unsafe vehicles application, through 438.99, penalty. Section 13, that the following amendments to Chapter 440, commercial and heavy vehicles of the Bellbrook Municipal Code, be approved with deletions shown by brackets and strike through, and additions shown by italics and underline. And we will be modifying Chapter 440.01, load limits. Looks like we'll be deleting just about all of that. Section 440.06, loads dropping or leaking, tracking mud and removal required. And then we, in Section 14, that the following sections of Chapter 440, commercial and, of commercial and heavy vehicles of the Bellbrook Municipal Code, be deleted in their entirety. Section 402, maximum width, height, and length, 403.03, wheel protectors, 0.04, vehicles transporting explosives, 440.05, towing requirements, exception to size and weight restrictions, 0.07, vehicles with spikes, lugs, and chains, 4.08, occupying travel trailer or manufactured home while in motion, 440.11, weighing vehicle, removal of excess load, 440.13, chauffeured limousines, and 440.99, penalty. Section 15, the following sections of 442, drivers of commercial vehicles of the Bellbrook Municipal Code, be deleted in their entirety, 442.01 through 442.99. Section 16, that the following sections of Chapter 444, offensive, offenses relating to the theft and fraud of the Bellbrook Municipal Code, be deleted in their entirety, which would be 444.02, police may remove ignition key. Section 17, the following sections of Chapter 452, parking generally of the Bellbrook Municipal Code, be deleted in their entirety, from 452.01, prohibition, prohibition against parking on streets or highways, to 452.99, penalty. Section 18, that the following sections of Chapter 474, bicycles, mopeds, and motorcycles generally of the Bellbrook Municipal Code, be deleted in their entirety, 474.01, from code application to bicycles, to 474.99, penalty. Section 19, that the following sections of Chapter 476, snowmobiles, off-highway motorcycles, and all-purpose vehicles of the Bellbrook Municipal Code, be deleted in their entirety, from 476.01, definitions, through 476.99, penalty. Section 20, that this ordinance shall take effect May 1st, 2016.
John, I'll give you credit for reading all that. That was quite impressive.
Thank you. So, the current traffic code section is about 200, 200-plus pages, of which, as you can tell by this, 90-plus percent of it is verbatim from what is in the Ohio Revised Code. And one would ask, why would you have verbatim Ohio Revised Code versus a municipal code? Well, a couple of things. One, if we had our own municipal court or mayor's court, and we cited under our local code, we would receive the fine revenue directly to us. We don't have either of those, so that fine revenue goes to the Zenu Municipal Court. We almost exclusively cite people under the Ohio Revised Code, because then if, for some reason, they are incarcerated, or if they have a medical issue, that burden falls on Green County as opposed to on the City of Bellbrook. So, there's no benefit to us to cite somebody on a local code that exists in the Ohio Revised Code. So by eliminating all these that we're not using anyway, what we're effectively doing is just cleaning up ordinances and making it so that what we're doing already makes sense. So, what we end up with is about 20 pages of mostly local ordinances that pertain to a couple of different items that may have some relevance. We'll go back and look at those too. It was just easier to eliminate all of the ones that had the Ohio Revised Code, and then we can look at those other few sections that are left, make sure that they still apply, that they're still important to have. If not, we'll eliminate some of those also. So by doing this, we'll greatly condense the municipal code to the sections that, that apply directly to us, that we may, that we've decided on a local level that they, they don't have a companion in the Ohio Revised Code, that we, for whatever reason, want to have a more restrictive law on our books, and we can keep those. And that's what will remain to keep, keep in place.
Mark, as a percentage of the total, what's kind of this first pass here? How much does that take out, just sort of a-
Probably 90% of it.
Okay.
Yeah. And some of the other ones, they may have a site in the Revised Code. I could not find it, and I didn't spend a lot of time, you know, looking, but a lot-
This was the obvious.
Right, these were the ones, most of these had a, the specific code and, and already cited within this, the Revised Code section, so I was able to match them up. In the future, we'll be doing something similar for our general offenses code, which is sort of the same thing. There's things in there about workers' compensation fraud and Medicaid fraud, things that we would never charge on a local basis, that, but they're in our code. So, that's the next project to tackle. But this has been reviewed by both the prosecutor, who is the one obviously doing this, he agreed with what we were doing, and the municipal attorney, just to make sure that we weren't missing anything, or by eliminating something, there was some unintended consequence of this that we didn't anticipate.
So this is introduction, so we'll get to hear more about this after we have a public hearing on it, at our next meeting, I would assume.
Yes.
Is there any other questions on this? Seeing none, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 2016-2?
Mayor, I'm so moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mike, roll call.
Motion by Mr. Martin to introduce ordinance number 2016-2, and ordinance amending Part IV Traffic Code of the Bellbrook Municipal Code, seconded by Mr. Schweller. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. We have one resolution this evening, Resolution 2016-K. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2016-K, a resolution authorizing the city manager to participate in a contract with the Department of Administrative Services Office of State Purchasing for the purchase of a fire vehicle for the City of Bellbrook. Whereas, Section 240.03 of the municipal code allows the city to purchase goods and services through a cooperative arrangement with another government entity. And whereas, the Department of Administrative Services Office of State Purchasing has entered into a contract with Buick GMC of Beechwood, Beechwood, Ohio, for the purchase of certain equipment in accordance with Section 125.04 of the Ohio Revised Code. Now therefore, the City of Bellbrook hereby resolves Section 1, that the city manager be authorized to participate in a contract with Buick GMC of Beechwood for the purchase of the following vehicle for the Bellbrook Fire Department. One, 2016 GMC Sierra 15, four-by-four, with accessories for a gross price of $26,936.80. Section 2, that the City of Bellbrook directly pays the vendor for said equipment under state contract. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Yes, this purchase, similar to all the vehicle purchases we approved at the last meeting, was included in the 2016 budget and was discussed during those budget reviews. This replaces a 2004 van, have you seen the 2004, the, 2004 Ford van that is driven around? This is what, this is the vehicle that that replaces. It's a pickup truck, there is some additional equipment and things that will be added on, so the, this price of just under $27,000, then there's about another $8,000 in equipment that will be added on, still keeping it well under the budgeted price of $40,000 for the year. So, this will be a nice replacement, it'll give the fire department some ability, a pickup truck is always nice to have for transporting things between the stations, things of that nature.
Sure. Any questions?
The other equipment, Mark, that'll be, I mean, obviously a light bar and-
Some of the, some of the equipment will be transferred from the current vehicle, but you have, you have to paint it, you have the light bar, there's some other things that, that have to be done. The lettering is part of it, Z-Bart protection, and then mainly the, the light equipment, some of it is transferred and some of it is new, radios, things of that nature.
Okay. Any other questions?
This our last vehicle, isn't it, Mark?
Yes, this is the last one that was included in the 2016 budget.
More questions?
Or are we gonna put our new logo on it?
We're working on that decision. The, the, both the fire and police sort of have a unique design, and they're, they incorporate the shield in some ways, so we're working on how to incorporate that, but then keep it consistent with the other vehicles, so.
Okay.
Well, I'll answer that later. We've got a little bit of time till we get it, so.
Any other questions for our city manager?
Well, it's gonna be white, or?
It's white, yes.
Red lettering on like the new medic?
Well, everything, it'll come as a white truck from the dealer, and then we'll, we'll everything else will be put on. Unlike the medic, they did everything, as they manufactured the medic, this one will just come as a white GMC truck, and then we'll do everything for that point.
It'll basically match the command vehicles.
Yes, that's, that's the intent. That, that's where we have to decide if we can incorporate the new logo into and still match those, and try to figure that out.
Gotta make the jump sometime, Mark.
Yes, we do.
Any other questions for our city manager? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2016-K?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I move that we adopt Resolution 2016-K.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Mittelstetter to adopt Resolution 2016-K, a resolution authorizing the city manager to participate in a contract with the Department of Administrative Services Office of State Purchasing for the purchase of a fire vehicle for the City of Bellbrook, seconded by Mr., Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. That is it for resolutions. We do have a city manager's report this evening. Mr. Schlockek?
Yes, so, within your packet, I, I provided an updated list of tagline options that was, that were given to us by the consultant. Also included a list of ones that were generated by the employees here. And just wanted to get a sense from council if there was any, I have them up here also, just to give you an idea of what, what they were. So I think this is the new set from, from the consultant there, and there was a handful of them there, and then we also have the list from the employees also. And I guess I want your feedback on if, if any of them jumped out at you, or, or maybe certain words within them, that I can continue to provide feedback to the consultant, and we can, we can begin to narrow this down, or maybe there's one in there that everyone can agree on.
Of course.
I don't have any, that's, that's a tough one.
I would agree, so that's why I'm asking first, so I'm copping out myself. Mr. Martin?
Yeah, I mean, a couple of these, you know, I, I kind of like the hometown values, modern-day service. I'm not sure if that's a little on the long side, right? I mean, I think we were looking for something a little shorter than that. I kind of like the, the concept, sort of the blending, but, you know, I mean, I, you know, I, I think, I think he's on the right track, I'll definitely say that. I think kind of the, the neighborly, the friendly, I think we all agreed that that was kind of where we were trying to go.
I like John's, small-town friendly. It says it all.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
I, I tried, I tried him out on my friends and family and some coworkers, and I guess most of the ones that stood out to us were about, were about friendly and about home. I, I kind of like John's though, too, small-town friendly. It's short and sweet, and you get it.
Mr. Schweller?
I like several, and to be honest with you, I'm not sure how you want to go forward. If you want everybody to just respond back and give you the top four or five picks and see if we have anything that's uniform or something.
That's fine, I mean, however you want to do it, I just-
I mean, I, I liked small-town friendly, I also like a special place called home. That was sort of, you know.
Did you say a special place to call home?
Yeah.
Where's that?
That was on the first one.
Yeah, so, I'm not a huge, I don't know, I'm not in love with any of them. Don't know if I even like the whole idea of having it, but, so. I think everyone, kid to Mark what the ones you like, and narrow it down to four or five, and then we can-
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we don't have to have one either. I mean, that can be part of the decision. I mean, it's just a matter of, you know, to me, this is something to put on the entrance signs and, you know, on the website, some of those things. It's not gonna be everywhere you see the logo, it's not gonna be on the vehicles probably, some of those things.
Well, she's gonna get the tattoo, isn't she?
Well.
So, you know, and I'm, I'm open to listening to other-
Modern-day service, I mean, all right.
You know, some input. It, you know, I think you've done a good job in giving us stuff to look at. This is a tough kind of decision, and-
It is, and it's actually probably more difficult than, than the logo.
Yeah.
That's a visual thing, it's sort of, you're sort of limited in what your options are, but, you know, if you can get me some more feedback, I'll pass it on, and, and we can maybe come up with, with a few, and then we can decide if, if we want to move forward with something, or if the choice is to not have it, so. Okay. Other than that, the bicentennial meeting that was supposed to be held, I believe it was last week, was canceled due to fears of weather, I think is what it was, but it's rescheduled for next Monday night, and I think there's actually one scheduled for the following Monday night too, so I'm not sure if that one will stay in place, but there is one scheduled for next Monday, February 29th.
So a week from tonight.
A week from tonight, on the 29th, will be a bicentennial meeting. They're, they're getting to the point of trying to sort of wrap up what the committee's going to do, and then really from that point, the events will just sort of happen, the Sugar Maple Festival incorporated in, the Lions Festival, things of that nature. So, they're, they're trying to get close. I think one of the, the big things that will be remaining is fundraising to generate money for fireworks that they want to hold at the end of the Lions Festival. So, that, that'll be the big thing that they'll be pushing for here in the next, in the coming months. The banners, I'm actually waiting for a response from DPL and Miami Valley Lighting to, we've located, there's 25 poles within the downtown area that we've identified. Most of them have brackets on them already, those are gonna come off, but we're going to put the new brackets in that, but I want to make sure that we're, we have approval to do what we're going to do. But we plan to get the brackets up here in the coming month, in, in March, with the intent of putting the banners up in early April in advance of the Sugar Maple Festival. So, that's the plan for that. And other than that, our next council meeting is on March 14th, since the 29th falls on a Monday. We actually have a couple weeks in between council meetings, more than usual, so. That is all I have.
Does anyone have any questions for city manager this evening?
I do. There was a report, I was out of, out of town last weekend for a hockey tournament, but I heard on the news that there was a car that hit a fire hydrant, I guess, and I was wondering, that was our system?
No, that was, that was the township, or that, well, it's Green County. It's their water system, they have a, a south system, that the water town, water tower down there on Ferry Road is what serves that system.
Okay.
So, they had-
Was it us?
It was not us. Unfortunately, when dispatch put out the call, it didn't reach our residents, but they sent it to the entire township, which meant everyone that was on our water system got the message, even though they did, it was not a boil advisory for us, it was not, there was no issues with ours. So everyone on the Wilmington Pike Corridor and everyone up off Feedwire got that phone call saying that they had a boil advisory when they did not. But by the time we realized that, it was, it was too late to really do anything about it. So, it was not our system, but it did have some ramifications to us.
And I think it drained the tower, at most.
Yes, it did. And, and the interesting thing, and I have not talked to the sanitary engineer, we have a cross-connect down in the-
I was gonna ask about that.
Edgewais area down there, that we could've supplied water to that system had they asked for it, but they did not ask for it. So, I don't know what, what the reason was or anything, I've not, I've not followed up with that, but-
We could also do that at the other tower up on Feedwire slash Upper Bellbrook too, couldn't we? Do we have an interconnect there?
We now have an interconnect. With, with the Clyo Road project, there's an interconnect there, right at the bridge there. And then over in Cables Mill, we have, we have two fire hydrants that are literally side by side, that we can put a hose between, and we can interconnect that way also. So we, we both have ways to supplement the system if, if we need to, but in this case, they did not call us and, and request that.
Any other questions for city manager?
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you, very nice, as usual. Moving on, committee reports. Service?
No reports, Mike.
Safety?
No reports.
Finance and audit?
Nothing reported, except I'm glad we finally completed buying over new vehicles, so we can, the money's already spent, the money's in the bank, it's all good stuff, but we're done with it for the year, so.
All right. Community affairs, we need, any more appointments?
We do, we, we have one and possibly two applications for Old Village Review. We definitely need one for a resident of the Old Village to be on, and I also need a museum board member.
Put up the...
Contact us if you wanna work on the museum or the Old Village.
And I think it was actually in the Dayton Daily News yesterday, that was, contact us before the meeting here, from somebody who saw it in Dayton Daily News.
Oh, okay.
So, we're getting some free advertising, at least there. And it's on the website, if anyone, the application's on the website, so anyone who's interested can go on there, fill out the application, and turn it in, and we'll take it from there.
If I'm not mistaken, it's a one-page application, so it's not a lot of work.
Correct.
All right, that is it for committee reports, then? Old business, do we have any old business this evening? Any new business? Open discussion. Forrest?
I have nothing.
Mr. Martin?
Nothing for the night, Mayor, thanks.
Nor I. I just wanna thank the chief for a great report, and keep up the good work for the fire department.
Mr. Schweller?
Just thank the chief and the fire department for doing such a great job. It's a big deal to have the ISO two rating, it sounds like very few people have it, so that certainly speaks out of the, the staff and the chief, so congratulations on that.
Yep, I'm just, I think, concur with that, and thank all the fire department in general, so they do a great job. This is open, we see Mr. Saban, Bellhop Cafe out there this evening, would you like to get up? One of our great establishments in Belbrook.
I'm here by mistake. I thought this was the bicentennial meeting tonight, so...
All right, well...
It's next, but, but since I'm here, I thought I'd just thank you all for the weather today. It was great, appreciate your help creating the weather out. Actually, I just, just real quick then, probably about seven years ago, was the first time I came to one of the meetings, and shared with you all our plans to open a coffee house. So, I guess I need to identify most of them.
Yeah, and your address, please.
Yeah. Mike Saban, I pastor Wayne's Christian Fellowship and Bellhop Cafe as, as community coffee house at 26 Northwest Street, Bellbrook. I live in Washington Township, sorry to say, but love to be here. But anyway, we're about ready now, we were presented plans to, for the coffee house six years ago, to convert the old American Legion building into a community coffee house. And so, this April will be our sixth anniversary, so we're excited about that, opening up. You know, it's turned out to be a really neat place, a community center, neighborhood gathering place for folks in the community, so we're really happy with, with our community involvement. We've really had favor of the local residents and, and the business in the community, so many of you are regular patrons, so we appreciate that. Couple of things that we've got coming up, I'll just take the opportunity to share, the annual crosswalk. I wear a number of different hats, other than pastor and, and coffee house barista. I also work with the Bellbrook Sugar Creek Ministerial Association, and the crosswalk is coming up again on Good Friday, March 25th. It's been, we get more people participating with that each year. We process crosses from three different locations and meet at Bellbrook Park at 12:00 noon on March 25th at Good Friday, just for a very brief time of, of reflection, the meaning of the, of, of Good Friday and, and the work of the cross. And then Easter Sunday, the Ministerial Association works together with the community of churches, and we do an Easter Sunday sunrise service at Bellbrook Park, that's at seven o'clock on March 27th. So, we're looking forward to having the community participate in that. And then another event that we, is coming up is in May, the National Day of Prayer, and we're always happy to have the mayor, and any of, any of you are welcome to come, a lot of the township folks, the police and fire, we, we pray as a community for, during the occasion of the National Day of Prayer, to pray for our own community and our state and nation as well. Then with, another thing, I was just making some notes back here while we were talking, but in, in May, I'm working with the merchants in the Bellbrook Sugar, the Bellbrook Plaza with Brian Coe and the other merchants there. We're planning to do a, a Bellbrook Plaza Optimus Sidewalk Days event. It'll coincide with, on the same day as the community coffee, or the community garage sales. So, it'll be on May 21st and 20th, 21st. We'll have some outdoor events in the parking lots, so I think it'll be a good, a good event. The Optimus Club's gonna help, help sponsor that as well. So, that'll be on May 20th, 21st. And then, you mentioned the bicentennial, but one of the things the Ministerial Association's working with in that is to put an event in the, in the middle of that series of, of events we're gonna have through the year. So, in July, tentatively July 16th, and we'll finalize that with the bicentennial committee, but we'll be doing, working with the Optimus Club and the library, last year we did an event called Honor, Honor Our Heroes, and we're gonna repeat that again. It was very well-attended with fire and police and from Sugar Creek Township and, and the city of Bellbrook. We're gonna have an ice cream social, that'll be sponsored by the Ministerial Association, and a series of concerts put on by local church bands and Christian artists. And we're still working on the venue, the, the right place to do that, but that'll be, the date is July 16th, so that's right in the middle of our great bicentennial events. So, I love being in, participating with the city of Bellbrook, it's just a great community. Working with us pastors in the community, we are proclaiming this to be a community of faith. I know that probably won't be on the, on the list, but it's dear to our hearts, and we, we love being, being involved in the community here, appreciate your support. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Very much. Mr. Saban? Would anyone else like to get up this evening? Seeing none, does any member on council have any further business to come before us this evening? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.